Mr. Richardson, would you please call the role?
Mrs. Crabtree.
Here.
Mrs. Erickson.
Here.
Mr. Gambiani.
Here.
Mr. Hamlin.
Here.
Mr. Matheson.
Here.
Mr. Paulson is going to arrive later. Mr. Broman.
Here. Jennifer, please say something.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I ask for a motion to suspend rules and return to a workshop setting, I'd like to address those who may be here to talk about or give public comment on Policy 7.40. This is what we call tonight a committee of the whole meeting. It's not a business meeting of the board. And you're welcome to provide public comments, and the public comments are scheduled at the end of the meeting. You're welcome to listen to our reports we're having on the Five Essential Survey data, the Annual Professional Development Report, social emotional learning update, for each public comments. Policy 7.40 will be on the agenda at our May business meeting, which is the second Wednesday in May. And you'll have the opportunity then as well to provide public comment both before the meeting for agenda items and after the meeting for non-agenda items. So, as I said, you're welcome to stay and listen to the reports tonight, and if you have your public comments and want to give them tonight, that's fine. But we will be discussing and have on the agenda at our business meeting in May, Policy 7.40, where we'll be discussing among the board. And you could hear that discussion at that time. So, if you want to stay, great. Well, we're glad to have you here, but if you'd rather come back for that meeting and have a discussion and provide your public comments, then you're welcome to do that as well. The United motion of the second to suspend the rules and return to a workshop setting.
Sir, move it.
Move by Mrs. Crabtree.
Second.
Second upon Mrs. Erickson. Mrs. Richardson, would you please call the role?
Mrs. Crabtree.
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson.
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani.
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin.
Yes.
Mr. Matheson.
Yes.
Mr. Broman.
Yes. The motion to suspend rules and return to a workshop setting has passed. Dr. Schuler.
Thank you, Mr. Broman. So, we have three topics on the board's committee of the whole agenda this evening, all of which come from either board goals or strategic plan items that you are monitoring. So, first, we're going to have a short presentation on the Five Essentials survey data. We've referenced that Five Essentials data a couple of times, and I do want to just mention at the onset, if you're looking through your green folder for this first presentation, you're not going to find it in the green folder. Had a little miscommunication in terms of getting that one printed, so it will just be up on the screen. It is in the electronic school board item as well, and we will make sure that board members get a copy. After the Five Essentials report discussion, Faith is going to give a report on our annual professional development report, both highlighting some of the work that was done this year and forecasting a plan for next year. And then finally, Joanne is going to, yeah, Joanne and Jen are going to give updates on your social emotional learning goal, which is one of the specific board targets for this year. So, without further ado, I'm going to hand it over to Julie Ozenkowski, who's going to give the board just a little bit of background on Five Essentials, what it is, as well as some of the changes coming to Five Essentials. And really, tonight is just about laying some groundwork around Five Essentials. We do believe it's an item that can work into your dashboard moving forward in support of some of the goals, but want to give you a little bit of that context tonight. So, Julie, go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. Tonight's presentation, as Dr. Schuler said, is just a general overview. We'll focus on two key questions. What is the Five Essentials School Culture Survey? And how can data from Five Essentials support Vision 2022 and serve as an annual metric on our new dashboard? This Five Essentials School Culture Survey is a state-funded survey, which pertains to different aspects of school culture. During the 2018-2019 school year, survey participants will include all certified staff, students in grades four through 12, and parents. It's important to note that in the past, student participation was limited to middle school and high school, but we anticipate the state adding fourth and fifth graders for the upcoming year. Five Essentials survey was developed by a consortium at University of Chicago, and the initial research was conducted in large urban districts, most prominently Chicago and Detroit. And they were able to identify five key characteristics of schools which are able to improve student learning, and they named them the Five Essentials. Those areas are effective leaders, collaborative teachers, ambitious instruction, supportive environment, and involved families. Within those essentials, for each essential, they identified four to five subcategories, which they called measures. You can see the measures listed in the tan text boxes, and they include areas such as math instruction, professional development, and something they call academic personalism, which we like to call differentiation and personalization. So, it really includes a wide swath of areas about how schools work with students. And at the heart of the survey are 230 core items. The items can include questions, and they also can include statements with which users agree or disagree. I included a few samples. There's a few samples up there, so you can see how the questions are worded. In 2013, Five Essentials was administered statewide across Illinois for the first time, and the requirement at that point was that districts give the survey every other year. And when we received our first set of data, we began our school-level improvement efforts using this data. As I mentioned earlier, there were 21 measures and a lot of items that helped our schools really focus on the ones that make the biggest difference for our students. We conducted it in district study, and we were able to identify seven measures which have the greatest impact on our students in District 200. So, those seven measures, we called the D200 difference makers, and those have historically been the starting point for schools when they examine this data and use it for improvement. As they prepared for 2015, the state worked with University of Chicago to revise those core items. They not only need to reflect the urban districts in which they've been developed, but also the rural and suburban districts that are using them these days in 22 different states. In 2017, probably the most exciting change for us, a bunch of supplemental measures and items, 83 items in total were added, and we are very excited to see that many of those items measure the things that we are working to improve in our learning environment, such as multi-tiered systems of support, cultural understanding, social emotional learning, real-world application, the FIT learning environment, and co-curricular activities, just citing a few of them. And in addition to data, at the item level and the measure level and essential level, the state assigns each school an overall rating. And this aggregate rating is designed to measure how well in general a school is organized for improvement. As you can see, 13 of our schools attain the highest possible rating, and 90% of our schools scored significantly above the state. So, there's quite a bit to celebrate in the data, but as we work with schools to look down at the item level, we've also identified some room for growth. And this balance between celebration and opportunity makes it kind of an ideal data set to use for our dashboard moving forward. And there's other ways Five Essentials will support Vision 2022 as well. My favorite part of my job is probably having conversations with principals and their teams about data, the story that it tells about our students, and working together to form an action plan. And for Five Essentials, we've had three cycles of rich discussions over a six-year period. So, we're able to capitalize on that. And basically, we freed the items from each of their Five Essentials categories and aligned them to the commitments of Vision 2022, if possible, for our first draft list. Then, we pulled all the administrators together for a very thoughtful discussion surrounding one key question. Which of these items best measure what we want to see in our learning environment? And our administrative team identified 37 target items that best measure the student learning and learning support system for our Vision 2022. They cover 10 of the different commitments and a variety of different topics, as you can see listed there. So, those 37 items will form the heart of the Five Essentials data for Vision 2022 in the dashboard. More directly, using the Five Essentials survey data will fulfill and implement under community engagement to develop a structured format for gathering feedback from students, staff, and parents. So, that's a direct and obvious connection, but also it will add student voice to the dashboard. Vision 2022 shows our increasingly student-centered holistic emphasis, and this will add our own students' voice to the dashboard metrics for the first time, which will be exciting. It also provides hard data for some of the softer skills that are harder to measure and helps to answer the question, you know, is this working? We've implemented it. How's it working? And I mentioned earlier that it used to be administered every other year. Beginning in 2018-2019, it will be administered yearly, and that makes it an appropriate data point for a public dashboard, because we'll be able to measure growth and change on a more timely basis. Our districts do have the option to expend their own funds. As I mentioned earlier, Five Essentials is funded by the state. We do have the option to spend our own funds to do a survey to meet the state requirements, and some districts also spend funds to add a second survey on top of Five Essentials to measure some of their local goals. Our plan is it stands where we're repurposing the existing items and putting them in different categories avoids its expense and preserves the funds for our other initiatives. It also, more importantly, preserves staff and student time and energy for learning. We're using data that we've already gathered. It's there. Just repurposing it, and that way, our students and staff can focus their time and energy on learning. And lastly, in Illinois, for the Every Student Succeeds Act, or ESSA, the new federal accountability system, Five Essentials will be part of our state and federal accountability. So, all of the efforts we put into moving the needle on those 37 target items will also have a nice multiplier effect and help us move our federal and state accountability as well. So, in addition now, moving forward to our school improvement level efforts, we've also designed a process for district-level use of the data. We'll aggregate the results on just those 37 target items and make a custom district report. There'll be an annual report to the board, and then we'll also place it as a data point on the new dashboard. And to implement this, we have a tentative draft timeline for the first two years of implementation. You'll notice some of the things are still vague and seasonal, and that's because we're waiting for windows and timelines from the state. Once we have those, we'll update it. But this is kind of how we envision the first two years of the process looking at this point. Thank you so much for your time, and do you have any questions about either the Five Essentials survey or how it fits with Vision 2022?
I have just two quick questions. I remember when I was filling it, I was a parent for a middle school. It was a very difficult survey to fill out, because it was asking you your child's teacher, and you have seven teachers. Have they made a change for middle school for that?
These days, what they do, and again, we're waiting to see the final things, but as it stands right now, it would be, you'd be assigned a subject based on your, you know, last name or something like that. Yeah, so, yeah.
And then my second question was for the students, it was the same thing. They were told, you know, you need to fill it out specifically for your social studies teacher or specifically for your math teacher, so that's what they're going to be.
Yes, and they get a representative sample that way. Yes. It originally was designed at kind of the grammar school, the K-8 grammar school model in urban districts, and so that your teacher, and that was some of the feedback and some of the changes that they've made over time. Great question.
I have a question for you. What was our participation level among parents in each of the, we had had three administrations at this point?
I guess. The parent participation has been the hardest one to obtain, but if we were using this as a data point on our dashboard, you know, we find that, you know, if we can make an effort, it can rise to the level. Usually, they ask for 20% participation to receive parent data. So, with it becoming a data point on the dashboard, we'll just up our efforts in that area, and we've been able to raise that in the past when we've needed to, so.
Julie, I can remember when in 2013, when the survey was first out, sponsors were providing some sort of incentive to get the parents involved, and I can remember going to the schools and that effort going on to make sure that we were reaching a certain percentage. Is that still available, or is there incentives given for parents to participate?
The state doesn't provide them. Schools might, one thing that the state has done which really helps us out, a couple of things. Number one, we have a great social media presence as a district where we'll be able to share that survey. And as we saw with the community survey last year, you know, the connections Erica has made have been really helpful pushing that out. And number two, they widened the window. It used to be a very narrow window. Now, they've widened it so that schools could possibly have parents, you know, come to a group of laptops when they're there anyway for a concert with a parent. It used to be narrow enough that you couldn't necessarily do that, but now it might be, oh, well, this is during the winter play. While you're here, you know, fill out the survey. So, and that's made it a little easier for us to make the concerted effort. As far as, you know, incentives, not sure what will be there, but our principals will each come up with something that works for their school culture.
And that was the other point. I attended the PTA meeting at Franklin in February, just after, a few days after the results came out for this year's survey. Mr. Benis was really teased, not, well, he was pleased with the results for the survey for Franklin and as well as all of our middle schools, but with the usefulness of the data that was coming back where you can focus it on. So, I take it over the time the survey's been implemented, we've been finding very useful data from the survey results.
Absolutely, absolutely. And that's one of the reasons it just was a natural fit for Vision 2022, and it became an annual thing, because the conversations that will trigger often, especially when you combine it with other data, can really get to the heart of what needs to happen.
Real tactical. Do we know if the data is published anywhere, or is it just contained and it's up to the district to manage that?
School-level data, it can be found in the report card, you know, if you dig down a little bit. District-level data is not published, I think, because of the difference among districts. You have some K-8 districts and some high school districts, so you don't see that publicly a lot. But there will be a report for our board, you know, now that we're using it for the dashboard, particularly targeting those 37 items that really get to the heart of our district goals.
And then I may have missed it, but who owns the data? Who owns this process? Who owns the data? Federal government?
As far as owning the data, as far as the individual backend data, do you mean? The backend data is University of Chicago through a contract with the state. It's the Urban Education Institute specifically at the University of Chicago. It is very locked down privately, though, like there's no, we don't receive data on which parents or which students said anything. That's very locked down, and they've assured me, I've talked to them about it actually, the data privacy, and they've assured me it's very locked down and confidential. They can tell who's taking it as far as students, but then they don't, they keep that very secure. So, it's a UFC in their data system.
Yeah, I wasn't concerned about security, although I probably shouldn't be, but I wasn't thinking that way. I was thinking more about the marketing, marketability of the data, and what can University of Chicago do with it?
At this point, they use it for like school improvement research and to inform a professional development for schools where they see weak spots across the board and say, a middle school level, they might say, hey, for middle schools, we're offering this because we know that this aspect of middle school can be challenged. That's why I've seen them do it this way.
Who publishes the results? Is it the University of Chicago, or do we kind of like that internally?
It's the, the report itself is generated by the University of Chicago by that consortium, and then the state links it to their report card. And then as far as for the school level, for the district level, we'll create our own customer chart based on the things that we're focusing on for Vision 2022 in a given year.
How were the 37 targets picked? I mean, that's a pretty overwhelming number, in my opinion. And how do those 37 target items tie back to the Five Essentials? There's two questions. And lastly, how's the hard data quantified for soft skills? Can you kind of walk me through those?
Absolutely, absolutely. The first question as far as how we selected them, initially, we did align, we took all of the items that's close to 300. Some of them didn't align to Vision 2022, or some of them were frankly out of our control, such as safety in local parks. The ones that were within our control, we put a tentative alignment in there of this might go with this commitment. So, they're all tied to the commitments of Vision 2022. If they didn't tie to those commitments, they weren't in our target item set. And then, our administrators all looked together and had some really rich discussion about the wording. Is there anything on the wording of this question that could be misleading or not get at the right thing? And they have been looking at the data for six years, and not only just looking at it, sharing it with their staff, using it to make changes, sharing with their parents. So, they knew, no, you know, this question may, you know, not get at the right thing. And they were able to identify those questions, but they all reflect the priorities of the board on the dashboards, so to keep us moving in the same direction.
And again, the last question, talk to me a little bit about the hard data for soft skills, and where is that data for us to see, or how often is it gathered? And just, I know, Faith, I always ask those numbers. I want quantitative information. If we're going to go through this exercise, what's the end game?
Absolutely.
What are we determining? What are, we're not determining how are we realigning and moving forward, so we're always kind of reinventing the process along the way?
Absolutely. And the data is published once a year, and it will come out. It depends on, we talked about the two kinds of items, one being a question that might be, for example, how often do you apply what you've learned in math to the real world during class? And so, that question, the data might come back, you know, once, you know, never, once a year, once a month, once a week, almost every day. And then we report, okay, we're expecting, you know, that to happen at least once a week in a math class or, you know, whatever we decide, and then we watch for progress on that metric. And then, so for the board report, it might be, okay, real-world application, that's a board priority. So, here's how we're doing on that. Here's where our baseline was. No, after a year of efforts, here's where our baseline is. And then at the school level, they really, you know, get into and talk about what's, you know, what's triggering that, what's causing it to grow, what's causing that to flatline, and what can we do? So, give you a good example, kind of example, you know?
I think Jim, at its core, it is, it's all perception data. So, it's survey data, so you're quantifying response in terms of perception to the same question from either all of the students that have responded to that question, all of the teachers that have responded to that question, or all the parents that have responded to it. So, it is, at its core, it's a, it's a survey. It's designed to be perception data around items that the University of Chicago and Five Essentials have aligned to reasonable targets that would suggest that instruction will improve. If those conditions are in place, and those that are receiving that instruction or, you know, are targets to it, if they perceive that item to be in place, it would suggest that the school is organized in a way that instruction will improve. So, there's a, there's a strong research base behind the items. Again, to some degree, we, what we're suggesting to the board is that we use this information in a way that it hasn't necessarily been used before, so it will still be a part of our school report cards per the state, but we'll be aggregating it to some system-level observations. But again, under the caveat that it's perception data, right? It's designed to tell us how people are feeling about those items and be able to measure that over time.
So, it kind of takes it the next step, like we were, as we may have had a process built, and we provided professional development for real-world application of that. It kind of takes it the next step. Okay, now is that professional development transferring over to what's happening with students?
If Julie very remember correctly, it's not even just student learning. It's school climate. So, it's how am I greeted when I walk into the building? And then there are questions, if I remember, like, to gauge your parent participation. Are those still in there?
Absolutely. As are you invited to participate. And then also, to help schools, we'll identify some of the barriers for parents, like if they don't have babysitting, and schools can use that data to determine how to tweak their parent involvement programs from those barriers, yes. And student perception data as well from the social.
Any other questions from board members? Julie, thank you very much.
All right. Tonight, I would like to do my annual report on our professional development, and I'll start off with just a highlight of what we've done so far this school year. So, I'd like to bring out some of the research that was done at Brown University. What is most likely to influence a teacher's changes in instructional practices? And this bears out what we already knew about PLCs, that that same subject teacher, that same grade-level teacher has the highest influence. It's not going outside to an outside trainer, or even less more, less so than the principal influence. It's those conversations that they have with teachers that teach the same subjects or grade levels that they do. So, with that in mind, the areas for district focus this year with FIT have been differentiation, personalization, and individualization. And we've given staff a lot more time to be able to work within their professional learning communities on that. We've also tried to expand leadership to the FIT triads this year. In addition to our FIT committee members and our principals, we added all of our library and learning center staff to those lists. We have the elementary math coaches and reading coaches, and this year, I also expanded it to the middle school reading teachers to work with me and work with their principals to increase reading and achievement and improve instruction at the school level. PLC work is continuing. I'm going to talk a little bit in a minute about staff empowerment. And then, we did some pretty significant work with principals this year in instructional leadership. So, want to make sure that you are talking about empowerment the same way that we're talking about it as a district. So, different types of learning. We have things that we learn because it's a compliance. We have to, they tell you, you've got to do it. That's okay, but it certainly isn't the type of learning that we want. You can get engaged learning. I'm interested, but I don't really, haven't owned the learning. Then you can go to this empowered piece, and that's when I'm really invested, and I'm intrinsically motivated, and these are the things that you learn about and you're reading about when you get home and you're, and you're really excited about. And we're trying to develop more of those empowered types of learning for our students, but also for staff. I included some of the topics from Week of Learning that we did in the summer, and I wanted to remind you, our staff comes to this just on their own. They are not paid for this. We do have some of our staff members, all the way from early childhood through 12th grade, that spend time over the summer creating these classes. And then, we had 400 staff members that signed up to come to these classes on their own time over the summer. Wanted to give you a little bit of a flavor of how Institute Day has changed. So, just a few years ago, Institute Day looked very much like people coming into public auditorium and listening to me talk about math methods, or listening to me talking about writing. We are now wanting to have that empowerment piece with staff, and that has changed. So, here are the directions that were given to our elementary and middle school staff from third through eighth grade, where they had a choice for part of the day. And they got to choose within their PLCs what they would work on, and I included some examples. So, instead of coming up with one activity for our department that all third-grade teachers would go to or all seventh-grade teachers, we came up with 14, and PLCs had time to choose from these, which was really relevant to their learning. Now, it's all tied to differentiation, personalization, and individualization, but they got to choose, here's something we're really interested in and we'll work on it together. And also, they got to match their learning style. Some people really want to watch a video, and that's how they learn. Other people want to have a conversation with a colleague. Other people want to read an article. We developed all these different ways to match their learning styles. They got to choose to go in-depth on a few, or skim over and pick some of the quick ones, and then this is all available for them to go into the rest of the school year or with PLC times. So, it's a little bit of a change on how we offer Institute Day times. We also had face-to-face things where they could come and meet with me or meet with me if they were in first or second grade and working on that. But I just wanted you to get a flavor of how Institute Day has changed. So, back to FIT and school improvement. As you know, the whole district, we worked on differentiation, personalization, and individualization, but we also wanted staff to have empowerment, schools to have empowerment. So, each school took their survey data and decided which additional area of FIT they would work on, so that it was really meaningful to them. And then, my staff worked with them, and we had three schools that we reached coaches with to help them have ongoing communication Institute Days, professional development around that topic. And here's some of the cool things that happened. One of the middle schools did a whole production in November on their Institute Day and gave lots of choices about differentiation. Staff got so fired up about that, that they worked within teams to have ongoing projects, that they invited other middle school and other high school staff from around the district and even outside of the district to do that. And those discussions and projects are still going on, and now they're planning a expo of all of the learning that happened from those ongoing sessions. Another middle school decided, we're going to give you time to pursue your own interests. The caveat is, you have to come back in May or June and share with everyone else in the staff what you learned. So, they've been given time, sometimes on a weekly basis, but always on a monthly basis, to meet in teams, decide an area of instruction they want to focus on, spend time and resources pursuing that, and then they'll go back and share. One of the elementary schools, we really got into problem-based learning, and the principal decided, I'm going to take all of the first graders, and I'm going to do an activity with them once a month, so my first graders should just have time to develop this. Same idea, training that went on throughout the entire year, and now they have from scratch a huge unit on problems-based learning just because of that. So, this turnover of giving the training choices, but narrowing it to, it's not anything you want, but how do you focus on differentiation, personalization, but making it very personal for staff? We saw some great results from that this year. I'll skip on to administrative professional development. By working with all the different coaches at the building level, this has also caused professional development for administrators, because now they're paired with someone who's just working with me on math, and having conversations about how to improve instruction, and it's at that building level. With our FIT triad, we just had a huge training yesterday, where we had all of the principals, the LLC directors, and the FIT committee members, and we talked about change, and we talked about leadership and management, and how to inspire our teachers. And that bode really good, especially for our elementary principals that don't have other administrators there at the building to help push these instructional initiatives. Had a lot of training on multi-tiered systems of support this year. We also are working with DuPage County with a group of our principals on time management and also circles of industry. And then we've continued this year of having our principals take turns presenting at our EC-12 meetings, so that each of the principals can hear from, you know, their own on a really successful program or idea that's happening at their building. That was a whole year of professional development in really fast time, so questions on that before I go to the plan for this coming school year?
I have a couple. Could you, you know, I have like buzzwords, so can you explain to the crowd and myself, what is a PLC, what is FIT? And then I have a couple follow-up questions.
All right. PLCs are professional learning communities, and the way that those are grouped are by teachers that teach the exact same course or the exact same grade level. So for example, at an elementary school, a third-grade PLC would be everyone that teaches third grade. At high school, you might take all of the chemistry teachers, and they get together. They work on four key questions. What do we want students to know and be able to do? How are we going to know whether they've mastered it? What do we do for those students that are below level? What do we do for those students that are already above it? And looking at, how do we improve our instruction and/or provide enrichment and intervention? FIT. FIT is the Future of Instruction and Technology. That's a District 200 term, you're not going to find it in a dictionary, and it is our vision for how we need to operate for instruction. It includes not only mastery of skills like reading and math and science and social studies, but the skills that our students are going to need in their careers, such as problem-solving, collaboration, creativity.
Great. And how long have we been emphasizing PLCs?
PLCs is in its sixth year at District 200.
And what would you say, again, we have some individual data this year, what has the trend line been? What, why, are we happy with that trend line? What are we gaining from it?
One of the key, we survey the staff every single year, and we are continuing to see staff perception that student learning is improving every year. We are still lagging a little bit, especially for how are we doing at reaching those students that are far above our learning target? It's on the incline, but we're so far doing a better job at reaching those students that are below and providing enrichment, providing intervention than we are enrichment. So everything is on the uptick, but we still have some room for improvement.
Question.
I have one question. So we moved this year to our high school to a weekly late start. How has that, has that been well received by staff? Do they feel that that was a better format to have the shorter weekly versus the every other week where it was longer?
Yes, by far. One of the reasons that we moved to that was that the staff was feeling, if you only meet every two or three weeks to talk about how are students doing to make progress, you lose a lot of opportunity in that planning. So because of staff feedback, we moved to the weekly. And our PLC data, we keep track of it by level. At the high school level, it had the biggest increase this year in staff reporting and increasing student learning. And they, when you ask them, they cite that as the reason. More frequent time, even though it's the same amount of time, it's more frequent so they can have ongoing conversations and better meet those student needs immediately after they get data or feedback.
Faith, on one slide, the examples from September Institute, two or three questions. One, who chooses that subject matter that makes it available for the different classrooms? Number one. Number two, how has this change been received within the district? And lastly, I guess, you mentioned 400 teachers participated last September. What's your gut feeling with regard to this? Fast forward to the, you know, anticipated September kind of numbers that you're looking at.
Sure. So the 400 are the people that came in in August on their own time. The September Institute is all staff that would have participated in these types of activities. From the choices that are offered, we work with math coaches, the reading coaches, the principals, some of the special education staff. What are the needs we see? And we also survey staff about what are the things that they're wanting to work on? And then our department puts together those different topics. So it's a blend of what we see as a need by either student achievement data or by observing instruction, and it's also what staff has told us that they want to help take them to the next level, with the focus this year being on differentiation, personalization, and individualization. And I think you had one more question, and I've lost it.
Maybe the attendance in August or this coming year?
Hard to guess. We continue to have more, but we're also, this August, we'll be putting some things together for our English learner program, and having those people come in for a day. So sometimes that influences their attendance on Week of Learning, because they've already given up a summer to do something else. I'll turn your attention. I did not make a slide presentation for this, but just your professional development plan that's in here. And we'll continue our work with professional learning communities or PLCs. We'll continue our work on our vision for District 200 learning. This year, we surveyed the staff as we always do, and met with the District FIT Committee and also with the principals at different levels. We're going to continue the focus on differentiation, personalization, and individualization, and I really need an acronym for that, because we're not awful. But those are the things that we are going to continue, because we don't feel that that work is done. There's so much excitement about that, and the staff, when given the choice, that was the unanimous, every school came out with that as the top need. The second choice, we saw so much growth from teams taking ownership of the second topic, that we're allowing that again. But we're also focusing schools not just to pick one component of our vision statement for learning, but to think about encompassing all of that. And yesterday, when we met, I think there are going to be quite a few schools that pick that as a blending of all of those things, of how do we put that in? Example is problem-based learning, where if you really get into that, that's also critical thinking, that's problem-solving, that's collaboration, that's, you know, creativity, all of those pieces. So that'll be the focus for next year. If you turn the page and look just at elementary, with multi-tiered systems of support, a big piece of that is, what do we do at tier one, and what does everyone focus on? And kindergarten through second grade and ELA, we're going to continue our phonics approach, and there's still some room. We made progress there, but there's still some work to do from K-1, 2 with buildings, really understanding the work from kindergarten to first grade to second grade, and how we incorporate them, especially for the end coding piece of phonics, which is spelling and writing. Grades three through five, we're going to work on guided reading with me. And then math, here's the focus, K-5. Math fact fluency, but with a focus not on anxiety, not on all the timed tests that go along with math fact fluency, but games, a lot of practice, a lot of number sense. We're going to be doing a lot of number talks to develop the number sense and fact fluency. We're also going to be looking at new social studies standards next year for elementary with implementation the following year. And then, as you know, on Vision 2022, we have a lot of work to do with communication and writing. Fast forwarding over to middle school, also still working on PLCs and FIT, big work on number sense. Made the commitment after talking with the middle school departments that I'm going to meet with each of the math departments at each middle school every other month next year. We've already started that, I'll be at Edison at 7:15 tomorrow. That the number talk piece and developing number sense is really an area of need that we'll be working on with everyone. That kind of goes into tier two of math, and just to remind you of all those educational terms, tier two is that intervention level that we're doing. Spent a lot of time this year working with the math departments on how math labs function at each of the middle schools, and we've revamped what that will be for next year to include a very specific amount of time on fact fluency, number sense, and really drilling down to the standards that are really, really important. We followed a lot of the work from Marilyn Fuchs as we did that. And we're really excited about what we put together, but District 200 did it again. We looked at a whole bunch of programs and said, oh, we could buy those, but they don't really fit. So the math, teachers and I have written new standards and activities, and we wrote it from scratch without any cost to the district. We're ready to go, but now we need to train all the people and make sure that everything is in place for next school year. The high school, the focus is really going to be on SEL and behavior, as well as PLCs and working on FIT. And at the principal level, we're going to continue MTSS, also spend some time on celebrating progress, and then we'll be working together with other members of SLT to think about how do we collectively work on having principals have enough time to be instructional leaders and having them have time to share, so that they can learn best practices from each other.
Faith, I don't purposely go out and argue what you tell us, I mean, but I had dinner the other day with my teacher group, and I had a third-grade elementary teacher tell me how pleased she was that we have math coaches, how excited she is about the Dreambox software program. She was somewhat skeptical at the beginning of the year, whether the kids would embrace it, and they just love what she said, and they're excited about it. The other participant was a library and learning center director from one of the middle schools. I asked about PLCs, but we've heard that it's a little difficult for a specialist like that to participate in PLCs. She said, no, not at all. She said she gets together with the other three library and learning center directors at the other three middle schools. She also works with the foundational teacher, yes, in that group at her particular middle school, and she says, she really enjoys the PLC work here, so. As I said, I don't purposely go out and argue, but I'm getting good feedback, maybe, so I want to let you know that.
I have a question, Faith. So I love that we're going to continue with differentiation, personalization, and individualization. Yes, we do need a method for that. So how do we make sure, because I think, if I remember correctly, last year, was it standards mastery, collaboration, and creation? How do we make sure we're not losing the momentum that we've gained with that as we continue to keep adding more and more?
Part of the meetings that I have with each of the principals is to make sure that's incorporated in their school improvement plan and how that works. With standards mastery, those are the things that we're assessing frequently with the district assessments, part keeping all of those pieces going. So that's an ongoing piece. The reading coaches, the math coaches are working on those pieces about standards mastery. And even with PLCs, PLCs are working on creating formative assessments, which tie into what we're trying to do with standards mastery. With collaboration and creation, the work on social-emotional learning standards really drives all of that piece as well. With the creativity piece, as we start working on our writing curriculum and on video production, that of course is going to support the creativity. So the goal is to be working on all of those things, but professional development focuses in on a few of them. So it isn't that, well, now we're done with that. It's now, how do we provide professional development to make sure we're adding that to the learning environment? They shouldn't be standalone, and that's why we're encouraging a lot of schools this year to look at putting it all together, because a really great lesson, has many of the FIT components, not just one or two. So it's about those conversations to keep the learning environment that we're not. Well, we'll put away standards mastery for this year, and we'll put away collaboration and creation. It's building upon all of those skills.
And then one more thing.
Sure.
You know, as I look at the costs, are pretty much nothing for this. It's already things that we currently have in there, nothing, and portions of people's salaries that we're already paying, maybe $20,000 to do all of this. It's pretty impressive that we're able to get all that done.
Yes. With moving to the staff empowerment piece, and because of all of the things that you can access off of the internet and videos and tools, you can bring a lot of enrichment and a lot of activities to staff without expending a lot of money.
If the Student Excellence Foundation supported a couple of things this year around professional development, would you just highlight a couple of those things?
Sure. Part of the work with collaboration and creation was working on bringing in CAGEN strategies, which CAGEN is an approach to classroom management that really focuses on engagement and cooperative learning. So that really fits in nicely with collaboration, creation, but also standards mastery. And that was, a significant amount of that money came from our Student Excellence Foundation. And then, they also paid for our production studios, which was cameras and green screens and microphones, video equipment, so that our students could be empowered to show examples of their learning, use their communication skills, their collaborations, because I would say problem-solving skills with some of the technology too. And it's so fun to see students, I worked on this all day Saturday, because they're so excited about what they're wanting to show and to do. And working on that communication piece, you think about when I was at elementary school, way, way, way back when, writing was very much about what I could put on paper and all of these things. Now, when students are creating a video, and colleges and work applications now include send a two-minute video, you not only have to think about the same things you do with writing, with what's your organization, what's your introduction, know your voice, you also have to think about what background is behind me, how do I speak, how do I present? And those productions to us were not only great this year, next year, as we really focus on crafting that curriculum to have that happen, they'll be an integral part of it.
And we saw that with the Samson team at Edison.
Just one last question, I want to get a recognition here. The Student Excellence Foundation, can we give, you mentioned they raised the monies to do this. Who is that organization, and what kind of events caused them to raise money? I think we have one coming up, that's what I'm bringing up.
We do. Erica, do you want to take it away? You sit on there.
The Student Excellence Foundation raises funds from, both from corporate partners in the community and individuals to enrich the learning environment. And so to allow teachers to explore different projects they may want to dabble in, have supported some classroom furniture projects in recent months, and they do have their annual Celebrate Our Stars event tomorrow night at North at 6 o'clock, and they're going to be recognizing six of our amazing teachers in the district, two former principals, Ralph Heatherington, Chuck Baker, and then also a Volunteer of the Year, Barb Marquardt, so. And you can go and see some great feeds at the event, too.
Any other questions, comments, and board members?
Great, thank you. So we'll transition now to our third final topic for this evening, so we've got two folks that will be leading this presentation, Joanne Panopoulos, who's our Assistant Superintendent for Student Services, and Jennifer Craig, who is the Principal of Washington Elementary School, who through an internship program this year, has been partnering with Joanne on the social-emotional learning work, which is one of the board goals, so. Joanne and Jen, go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, so I'll begin with where this is situated within our Vision 2018, and soon to be Vision 2022 until that's formally adopted. But at this point, our focus has been to design and implement a systemic approach to social-emotional learning. Common definition, just for everyone here in the audience, is that one that we use regularly within our district is one adopted by CASL, which is the collaborative for academic and social-emotional learning. But it is that process in which students are able to recognize and understand their feelings, their emotions, demonstrate some caring for concern with others, establish those positive relationships, make some responsible decisions, and then also understand how that they can handle those challenges. Obviously, there are an immense amount of benefits that align with the social-emotional learning that occurs in schools and outside of schools, but as you can see from this graph here, this was a 2011 meta-analysis, and if we look and focus on that, the benefits of it raising student performance is ultimately where we want to see those benefits occur. And so looking at stronger social-emotional skills, we see an increase in academic achievements. There's a more positive approach in working with others, stronger attitudes, and then ultimately a positive classroom behavior. In terms of reductions, schools will see fewer conduct disorders, less emotional distress in students, and as we continue on, we'll see that in District 200, we're finding the same. So I did mention CASL, which is So I did mention Castle, which is the Collaborative for Academic and Social Emotional Learning. And it is an organization in which we have adopted a lot of resources, a lot of research that has been conducted, because we do also work with the Regional Office of Education, in which we have a Castle coach. DuPage County is lucky enough in which we've been a recipient in terms of a grant. And so we have a small grant which allows us the access to an SEL coach. A lot of our other surrounding districts have access to this as well. And it's a great consortium of resources. So we've adopted these, the five competencies in which Castle highlights as essential competencies for social emotional learning. I'm not going to read them off, but as you can see in black, you'll see that there's Goal 31, Goal 32, and Goal 33. And that's just to illustrate the Illinois State Social Emotional Learning Goals that overlay within these competencies.
So here we see our FIT learning guide that Faith referred to in her presentation. And it really is the center of everything that we do. The standards for math, reading, science are the what we want to teach the children. The FIT guide really lays out the how. And we know that the learning environment really, really matters. And SEL and FIT really go hand in hand. We have highlighted that district-wide focus this year that Faith mentioned. And I'll go ahead and coin an acronym. I'll call it DPI. The whole district has been focusing on differentiation, personalization, individualization. And in order to do that, a teacher really needs to be mindful of those individual needs and preferences and learning styles of his or her students, and also teaching the child some self-awareness, how to make good choices when those choices are offered in the classroom. In the last several years, we've really focused on that Collaboration and Creation, which when you read those bullet points, that's all about SEL. It's understanding yourself and how you work with others. It's understanding the group situation in your classroom and how to get along and work with others. Along with each building having a DPI goal in its school improvement plan this year, as Faith mentioned, we all were able to choose an area. And then in addition, we had a social emotional learning goal, which I believe is part of your packet. I'll kind of give you an example of how, at my school, we tried to make it all fit together. Our social emotional goal that we chose was about goal setting. And then our second FIT area, we chose higher order thinking. But focusing on that third bullet point of learning, self-assessing, and owning the learning process, and blending those two goals together, we really did a lot of growth mindset work with the children. So you can really see how SEL fits into so many components of the learning environments that we're already trying to create for our students.
Thank you. And as Jen mentioned, there are two pieces, two additional documents or packets that you do have. One is labeled SEL standards by grade level, and then the other is the building SEL goal summary. So as Ms. Craig mentioned, that the SEL building goal summary is in essence one of the examples she gave for her individual school, but outline that for each of our schools, which is very helpful to see. So as I talk about our goal work plan that we've designed for social emotional learning this school year and get into what those indicators and accomplishments have been throughout this year, do want to reemphasize that we do have an SEL design team. And that design team consists of members across the district from early childhood level all the way through high school. And it includes teachers, it includes counselors, social workers, psychologists, a board member, Ms. Crabtree's on our team, as well as a couple of parents. And then we also have our SEL coach, and we have administrators as well. So it's a really well-developed team in terms of cross-reference of those in our district. And for the past five years, formally, we've been meeting to really, number one, set the foundation for understanding what social emotional learning is, what those standards are. And this year, our goal is to really focus on planning ahead. And so that next school year, we can be explicitly teaching the skills that align with the standards. And so as we look at some of those indicators, the work that we've done this year has really been rolling our sleeves up and understanding that ability level, what that looks like in terms of planning for next year. So what we've done thus far is worked at various grade levels because we have, you know, between early childhood, it's very different in terms of planning for middle school and high school and vice versa. And so over the course of this year, we've gained a lot of feedback from our principals and from our administrators and understood what works. But at the same time, was very clear with everyone and having that understanding that we will be addressing these SEL standards so that there is continuity across the district from grade level to grade level. So all first graders will have access to certain standards. And that is another packet that you have, that grade level packet. And so the work that we've conducted this year has really been able to bring all of us together with regard to grade levels and having a common understanding that first grade are going to be having explicit instruction and specific standards, second grade, third grade, and such. That is a big task because what we've been practicing thus far is we've been integrating these standards throughout and we've been giving, you know, flexibility for our staff. And that's been working because it's been, you know, aligning with what teachers and staff have been doing thus far. And so, you know, just a headline for those staff to understand that that's what we're going to be moving to has not necessarily changed the work that they're planning to do, but we will be talking about what those implementation plans can look like. So overall, those are five of the eight of the indicators that we've talked about. And then each school will also be working to identify what that professional development plan is going to look like for their building. So there are some tight, kind of, we look at tight and loose, like some of those tight pieces are that each of the grade levels will have standards specific. And then some of the loose pieces will be how each of those grade levels would like to go about that and what kind of professional development they'd like. Some other pieces we've worked on this year, not only in the world of SEL, but also with multi-tiered systems of supports, because there's a lot of crossover there when it comes to positive behavioral supports and just a positive learning environment, is discussing ways in which we can measure, because measuring social emotional learning can be very difficult. It can be more of a challenge, I should say, rather than difficult, just because there are some soft skills in there and there's a lot of judgment or there's some perception with that. And so we are working on these next two bullets pretty explicitly. We've had lots of conversations. We've done a lot of research in this. And those will still be determined. And then lastly, is that communication plan will include some of the plans from each of the buildings as to how they plan to go about communicating this out. So all those are definitely under development. So I'm going to talk a little bit about what it looks like at each level. And Jen, Ms. Craig will also do the same. At early childhood, as you know, three and four-year-olds sometimes are coming into school for the very first time. They're coming into the learning environment. And so their environment, their learning process is just extremely situated with social emotional learning skills. And so that is a natural for our early childhood development in general for our staff. We specifically in District 200 use what's called Creative Curriculum. It's a skill streaming curriculum in which students are heavily, like I said, from every moment there, from the time that they either get off the bus or they're getting out of the parent's car, from the time they're walking into school, they are nonstop working on those social emotional skills. One way that they measure is the Teaching Strategies Gold, which aligns with the curriculum. It is a solid evidence-based curriculum along with the measurement tool. And it's a scale. And so it really gives a good indicator for parents, for teachers, as to how that student's performing on those skills.
Of course, at elementary, we also have had a lot of great social emotional learning happening for years and years and years. It's what elementary teachers do. We teach the children how to demonstrate self-control. We teach them how to be kind. We teach them how to work well with others and make good choices at school. But this year, we did work to make sure that we can guarantee that each child is explicitly being taught in a real deliberate way, all of those SEL standards. So what we did for elementary is we looked at the state standards, which the state divides them into primary and intermediate. So they have a group of standards for K3 and another group for 4-5. We decided that although teachers do embed all of those standards at those levels, we wanted to give each grade level teacher a shorter set of standards to make sure it was explicitly taught. So kindergarten and first grade ended up with six standards to cover in their year, up to fifth grade with 11. And you can see who was part of that decision, SEL design team, our elementary MTSS behavior, and elementary administrators, in making the decision of how to place those standards, K5, in a developmentally appropriate way. Then we pulled in teachers from each building. So all 13 elementaries were represented. We had two teachers per grade level, two EL teachers, a special education teacher, and a social worker. And they developed resource guides for each grade level. We used our second step kits, which each building has a second step evidence-based program, a variety of resources provided by Castle. As Joanne mentioned, we've had a coach that has been helping us from Castle. And then also Read Aloud, picture books that teachers have been using and things that they have developed, real deliberate lessons in how to teach some of those social skills. And we met for two half-days and it's a blast to have in the room all the teachers that are highly skilled in SEL, because it was a very positive, very enthused group, and really came up with a lot in just those two half-days of work. Then we brought those back to the buildings and building principals have been meeting with their teams. The way I did it is I had a day where I brought in each team for about an hour and we looked, talked through the standards, we looked at the resource guide, and we started to plan what that was going to look like for their grade level next year and how it was going to fit into their pacing. And started to identify if there were any additional resources we think we would need in our building and any professional development that we couldn't take care of in-house with our social worker. And also that teacher that came to represent our school, starting to use that person as kind of an informal coach as well. But if there was anything else that we were going to need, then we all put in, all the elementary principals completed a Google form that goes back to Joanne so that we know if buildings are going to need some support to implement that next year. With middle school, we decided to handle it a little bit differently. Again, the state has the middle school standards in a band, six through eight. We decided because, in order to really match and fit some of the wonderful SEL things already happening in our middle schools, we would leave them as a band of six through eight and let the middle school take the approach they're already using. Whereas some want to break them out and have sixth grade standards, seventh grade, and eighth, some are doing a building-wide focus and have a lot of great things developed already. And we want them to keep going with that, but then build and add. And again, they're doing the same process of identifying any extra resources or professional development they might need in order to move forward.
All right. And then with high school, high school again is organized by 9-10 and then 11-12. So the standards are broken up to nine standards in each of those bands. And what we've done at the high school level again is with work on not only the SEL design team, because both assistant principals from each high school assistant principal is a part of that, and then leads that work within their own buildings. And a lot of the social emotional learning that's already happening in their buildings is what they're continually building upon and then also adding some explicit teaching that goes with it. So a lot of the work that the high schools have done is basically have done a crosswalk of subject areas that are already addressing social emotional learning standards. And a lot of it is rooted either in government or history or social studies classes as well as health classes. And then they also combine and have that whole school approach. And so as you see here, some of the examples, Stalk was talked about that cooperative learning and that second bullet and instructional coaching that is really hoping to support that social emotional learning, as well as the other, our other school, using some cross-part mental implementation of explicit teaching within school-wide activities. We've got more pride. We also have lead crew. And so there's school-wide programs and supports that are happening that's also reinforcing those explicit teachings that are happening within access periods as well as classes. Now, keep in mind, next year is the year in which there'll be some specific explicit teaching in addition to what's currently happening. And so it's only going to get bigger and better and more supportive in these environments. And then lastly, the high schools have been also working on our self-reflection tool, which as that ties in with one of those indicators that I mentioned earlier in terms of how are we going to measure SEL. And that's something that across the board, outside of early childhood, even elementary, we've been looking and talking about, how can we be measuring SEL on a regular, frequent basis in addition to a long-term basis? Because there's a lot of different ways in which we gather information and use it for different ways.
So for measuring SEL, we currently have, look at our suspension data every year. The Illinois Youth Survey happens at middle school and high school every other year. And then the Five Essentials Survey has been happening on that off-year. And then in our school improvement plans, the goals that we talked about. And also as part of our principles, as we're walking through classrooms and we're looking for all the components of good instruction in math and reading, there are components of what we look for that directly ties into the social emotional learning in the classroom and the classroom climate. We also have data on our hospitalizations, our students that needs significant supports with their mental health. We have all of that data to look at, but in the future, one thing we're talking about developing is an SEL reflection guide. So beyond just having a couple of components of our instructional walkthrough guide, really hammering out all of the points that we really want to see in a classroom to know that the classroom climate is what we want for our students. As Julie mentioned before, the Five Essentials is going to an annual, which will give us that yearly data. And also by now, including fourth and fifth graders, we'll have that annual measure for elementary schools as well. And then another thing that we're going to take a look at, the elementary report card has learner characteristics, things like demonstrating self-control. Some of the language on those could be easily revised to really match SEL standards on the report card.
All right. And as we discussed about some of the data that we collected, this is something that we've been using on our dashboard from year to year. And the two indicators that we look at are, excuse me, attendance rate and also the pertinent set of students between grade six and 12 with out-of-school suspensions. And we've discussed this before, that there are probably other measures that are more pertinent to the type of learning we're looking for. And so this will be something that we'll be looking at as we just described, what other ways can we measure SEL and see that it's making an impact on our environment. But if we look back at the growth that has been done in these two areas, you know, for this year, you can see a great celebration specifically in both areas, as we've definitely reached our indicators in both of those areas. And it's only, well, it's April at this point. But the percentage of students who have not had that many of out-of-school suspensions has reduced drastically. And so that's a true test against some of the practices that we're incorporating in our schools. A lot of restorative justice practices where students are really reflecting on their actions and they're having conversations with their peer in which they were not necessarily in agreement with prior and kind of walking those situations out is a practice that we've been really, our schools have been adapting organically on their own and have been coming back and saying, wow, this is really a great piece here. And we're seeing that students are not back in our office where we're needing to redirect and reteach and kind of have them reflect as much as it's done before. So again, this will be a piece that we look at in terms of measurement in the future. So as we talk in closing, and for next year, our goal again is for all of our staff to be having that explicit teaching in SEL. It's happening already across the board, but to have it in a way in which we can really guarantee that there is a focus on specific standards per grade level. Not to, again, imply that that's not happening right now, but it will be much more systemic. We'll also be reviewing and determining what that plan of measurement is, as it could be a very challenging way to measure. And then in 1920, the following year, we'll continue to measure and implement that plan of measurement and then also review and monitor how that implementation is going so that we can sustain it over a period of time and not lose sight of what great work has been done. Lastly, these are budgeted numbers. They're not exact numbers. However, at this point, the, one of the programs or the resources that Ms. Craig talked about at the elementary level specifically would constitute that, the outer mount at the top, which are some additional programs for our buildings. That would be some second step materials. And then also some novels or some of those books that relate to the lesson plans. And then down the road, if indeed we choose to go with a measurement tool that is more standardized, we would be looking at that $24,000, which will be helping us to kind of benchmark, get a sense of where students are at the beginning of the year, potentially in the middle, and then at the end of the year. Not only would that be the piece, that's kind of the drive-through version of what I'm describing, but it would also be able to give us a lot more information on a regular basis. So again, not determined quite yet. It's definitely been some of those in the discussions as we look at measurement and how are ways in which we can do that. But so those are just projected costs and not necessarily final. Any questions?
I had a question for you. I'm still struggling with the understanding as to how social emotional learning curriculum is delivered to high school students. Can you... Can you give us some specifics on that?
So if, oh, I didn't break it over my head there. But if we look at, I have an example in my folder, I apologize. Specifically in a civics class, thank you, I've got a footpath folder. One of the examples that the high school had given specifically in like government classes is when, for example, we're looking at a situation for Martin Luther King and understanding different perspectives, but in a positive manner. And so that's one example that I can give, and I know it's not specific at this point. So that example I just gave, for example, is the social-emotional goal is to identify and manage one's, manage one's emotions and behavior. And this would be like an 11th and 12th grade focus. And that would be to evaluate how to express more positive attitudes to influence others. The example that they provide is in government, students would analyze the impact that Martin Luther King has on others with his non-violent acts and positive attitude towards others, others' rights. And so social studies teachers, partner chair, for example, would work with the social studies department. That's just one example of what are some of those other skills that are desired and then design lessons or specific middle lessons that would support that skill.
Can I piggyback on that? So Jenna, last year, actually it was in May, I believe Franklin, I had that exact same question of how are we doing this even at the middle school level, the high school level? And Franklin invited me out to spend, I think it was a half a day there. And I went to each subject area. And on every room has a target that they're working on, their SCL goal for that day, even in PE. And so I went from every single subject area and I kind of got to see how they explicitly teach, but in context within that, within that subject area. So that kind of, I'm going to jump onto that is, so some of our schools are farther along the SCL trail than, than maybe some other schools. So how are we allowing for that autonomy to still occur, but then maybe bring in some of the other schools up into those areas?
I was going to, I'll answer that and Joanne can jump in too, but I wanted to add on to your example from Franklin, middle school, high school. I've walked through Franklin and seen their learning targets. And another example would maybe be it's time to work in a lab and the teacher talked through with them how they're going to work in their, let's say, a group of four, how are we going to handle if we're disagreeing? And at the end, the students reflecting on how it went and what kind of a participant they were and if they had any conflicts, how did they work them out? So actually having them practice the skill and then reflect upon it together, a lot of that is happening. I just know the time I spent with the elementary teachers, we also had a wide array of different experiences that had been happening and there was a lot of sharing going on. And part of creating that resource guide was to pull upon some of the great work that's already happening in the district so that all buildings could work around it.
And one question on the, I assume that this area, we're dealing with social media as well, you know, iPhone, whatever you want to call it. How do we, do we, we do approach that under this category, obviously. Okay. And how do we do that? When do we start it? And how do we get the, inform the parents of the process or, because they're our biggest help in that category, let's face it. So do we communicate with the parents in some way to, you know, watch out for this or do that? How does that all work?
Right. And I think some of the things the district has already been doing, like showing screening jerseys is huge, but that would, all of that digital literacy piece would fall under the third goal of SCL, the responsible decision-making. And we start at the elementary level where our library director teaches those lessons when the kids are in the library with the classroom teacher, working on something. And, you know, they'll go through, do you ever share your full name online? Do you ever share your phone number? Do you ever say where you live? And they go through different scenarios. So as young as elementary school, we start that. The parenting workshops as well. And in the middle school, there's an actual digital citizenship course that the children take.
To expand a little bit further on that, how do we, or maybe you're doing this, but clearly the family dynamic creates different scenarios for the students, right? Bad week at the house, whatever it may be. There's a litany of things that trigger certain things in these students' minds and yet they're trying to stay focused on academics and being a good citizen, a good, good classmate. What, how do we weave that into that maybe have? How do you weave those elements outside the schoolroom, outside of the classroom, outside the building and make sure that we're touching that or exploring that and being much, you know, at least cognizant of the situations that could, you know, change that SCL behavior? A, B, how do we identify it? And C, how, what are the interventions?
I'm not sure if I'll fully answer your question, but I think something that we see sometimes is a little child showing behavior that maybe they've seen demonstrated by maybe an older sibling that we wouldn't find appropriate to school. And we just teach them that this is our rules for school here and this is how we treat each other here. We don't ever want to talk directly against something that might be okay at home, but we teach them what's okay here at school. As far as a child that might really need support or a family that might need support, when we find those things out, we really try and link them to our social worker to provide resources and reach out to that family.
And then I do know too, depending on the buildings, because we are at different levels in terms of implementation, and so oftentimes buildings will be communicating what social-emotional goals or making those connections with their families through their regular weekly letters or monthly texts. And so they'll offer out ways in which they can support their students at home in certain common language, things of that nature.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Jim, Brad?
So for a few years now, I guess since my daughter got into high school, I've been very aware of and heard about hospitalizations. And this is something that we've noted that we're now starting to measure. And I think that's a newer metric for us. And often we think of hospitalizations, we think of, you know, drugs in high school, but actually the data is not that, it's more the stress and anxiety and social issues maybe that our students are experiencing. I wonder if you could talk about how we're using that metric, how we're building maybe a baseline, how does that fold into, you know, what we're going to do in the future? And then that as part of a question, other idea, maybe at the end of, at the end of this conversation, share a thought that I had that I learned elsewhere.
Sure. So we have been collecting data on hospitalizations for the last at least six years. More diligent conversations have been happening as we've been looking at the longitudinal data. Over the course of those, I would say, five, six years that I have data, it's been pretty stable until this past year. We've seen some excellent growth. And when I say growth, it's actually been a decline in the numbers of students that have been hospitalized this year. In both of our high schools specifically, our middle schools, we do see students who are hospitalized, but not to the extent that we do in high school. So overall, we do work with, I connect with our counselors at the middle school level specifically, and then also our assistant principals at the high school and Dr. Hammer as well. And we all stay informed about those numbers and how things are happening. Now, the conversation that I had with our assistant principals at both schools this year when we checked in on, on how things were going and why we saw that decrease, the possible hypothesis was, and I believe it's a firm hypothesis, is that we've had a lot of preventative programming in place. And I attribute that to the assistant principals of both high schools who've really taken a lead in number one, working with our hospitals, connecting with those liaisons. So when students are hospitalized and they're connecting with the liaisons and making sure that there's a solid reentry for those students so that it's a subtle reentry and it's not one that's going to put them back into a hospitalized situation. The other piece is really working with the staff and having our staff have a solid understanding of what anxiety looks like, what depression looks like. Because we are finding that students that are being hospitalized, it's not those who are either using, you know, drugs or more at risk for those types of behaviors, but more students who are experiencing that high anxiety. And so providing that support for our teachers through lunch and learns, for example, teachers have been very responsive to the types of supports that have been in place. They've also, both high schools have been working a lot with their counselors and their social workers to provide a network of supports for students. So those social, those groups for students who are experiencing these pieces and giving them strategies, giving the students tools, making sure that there's check-in, check-out type of options for those students. So in the beginning of the day, they check in, in the middle of the day, they're checking in or it could be more frequent. So things like of that nature are happening. And so I think, you know, when you look at that in totality, this year we've seen a real reduction, which has been a great promise for our students.
So is that a data point that we're going to continue to track as maybe as part of vision 2022 dashboard?
Yeah, we, we certainly continue to monitor on an annual basis. We can certainly share with the board whether you want that as a public dashboard item. I mean, again, it's not, not a matter of not wanting to share that data, but I think there's some pretty personal information tied to that data that'd be a little bit concerned in terms of a public dashboard item. But I, but absolutely, I think as the board looks at SCL programs, that's a data point that you ought to continue to ask about and we ought to continue to use information from, to drive not only the parent seminar opportunities that we see, but our focal points around SCL and the focal points of our support staff, obviously, in the building. Last thing I'll mention, I think Joanne and Jen both mentioned this, but there's been a much heavier emphasis as well around connecting with kids at both of the high schools at that entry point, right? There's a lot of data around the importance of success in that transition year. That's why the state candidly is tracking freshmen on track, you know, within that first year, because that's just a huge transition point. So I think beyond some of the academic measures you see at both high schools, a very diligent focus around connecting peers, so Link Crew and opportunities to make sure that those pieces are addressed for kids as well so that they make a good social transition in high school as well.
We saw evidence of that when we had a chance to chat with the board at North. There's the Link Crew there, the two young men that run Link Crew there and the great work they were doing. And I've heard anecdote, the same sort of work going on, we warned the South. It's just really heartwarming to hear those stories and to see what's been done at the high school level.
Can I ask one more question? So the Illinois Youth Survey comes out twice a year. How are we using that data and are we getting that data by just a district level or are we actually getting it by school level?
So it is. It's offered every other year, so it's the same group of students who are surveyed and so they can collect some longitudinal data. It is presented by each school or organized so that each school gets their information and then it's also provided to us by district data as well. Each of the schools have received their data based on when they offer their survey. And so, you know, in aggregate, I guess I would say in May is the time which we usually get to see the district data because between January, the window is very broad, it's from January all the way through May. But in District 200, we've all decided to give that survey between January and early June, so.
Not that I want to be the clarifier, but what is Link Crew? We talked about it. Could you expand on that a little bit? Freshmen at, at North, especially when volunteered to work with, freshman stalkers who will work with eighth graders who are coming into the school to help them adapt to high school, to kind of give them some guidance, to help them, time management issues and that sort of stuff and distress issues. And there's a similar program at Eat More in the South.
So just an idea that I've had and I'll share, talk about how I've kind of experienced this realization recently, but we've talked a lot about safety. You know, we've taken steps within the last couple of months to, you know, deal with security entrances, deal with the, I don't know, the video cameras at a couple of schools. And that's certainly a national conversation. I had a, I had an opportunity to attend a conference in early March, a national education conference, and I was at a session on SCL and it was all about safety. And it was a principal from Northern California, parent, mom of a student from Sandy Hook that was killed and some other people. And they talked about how these safety issues are really SCL issues outside of school. And, and, you know, we only had students for so long. We have great, you know, how we embed SCL into the curriculum through the grade levels, but when we're outside of school, a lot of, you know, challenges, challenges occurred. We experienced that as a district where something happened, you know, outside of our school and it came into the school. We had, you know, this issue in one of our middle schools. So I'm wondering, you know, in a future discussion, is there something bigger we could do beyond, you know, our role as a school district in developing curriculum that is much broader, you know, as part of a, you know, a leader within the community and maybe, you know, all these places that kids interact, deal with adults, have conflict, have challenges? Is there a bigger idea that we can kind of create across the different agencies, our districts, you know, football teams, baseball teams that can, can help us work with our students that have a bigger network of people that help embed these SCL learnings and characteristics, you know, beyond the, the time of the class day? I know it's a, you know, a big, a big idea, but when you look back at all these school safety and security issues, there's, there's, there seems to be a pattern from what I've read and heard that there's issues that are outside of school. So I just think, you know, what we're doing is great, but we can always do more. Never want to accept what we're doing, this is just, that's all we can do. So I just, I'm just, I believe there's something bigger that we can generate as a, as a member of the larger community and, and explore something that might have a bigger impact on students, you know, the entire time. So there's no question in there, I understand that, but it's an idea that I've been wrestling with, I've had this idea with some people, some of my teacher group and they were, everybody seems to be a little bit intrigued with it, I don't know how to implement it. But I put that on the table as maybe as a future discussion point as, as a school board and maybe as a district.
I would just make two quick comments on that. I would number one, work with, you know, I know Dr. Hammer leads that safety committee and just kind of find out if any conversations have ensued about that thus far. But I do know of, just with working with our regional office of education and sitting on their social-emotional learning committee, is hearing other communities that have incorporated police agencies and other community, you know, efforts so that it's, any of this social-emotional learning that's happening within the schools is getting then reinforced throughout the community. It's a two-way street, but it's been working for some of those communities specifically, Carroll Street area. So it is out there, it's something we can certainly look into in the future and see if that would be a possibility.
Anything else? All right. Go complete the discussion. All right, then we move to public comment. We do have a number of speakers that have signed up. Brad, are you in position to time?
Uh, sure.
The opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a question or comment on an agenda item or non-agenda item tonight. The board appreciates your input, stakeholders, and value your thoughts and questions. The board strives to make the best decisions for the district and public input and the variety of venues is very helpful. The board must protect its civility and decorum at this meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board, democratic process in your comments tonight. Please use the microphone, we have a microphone over here. State your name and address your comments to the board. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please be factual and courteous and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. If you feel your matters need to be discussed in more detail, please attend the board's chance to chat. Those sessions are done for this year, but present your writings to us and, present your comments to us in writing. Or as I mentioned at the beginning of our meeting, we're going to be discussing policy 7.40 at our official board meeting in May is an agenda item. So I'll begin. The first speaker I have signed up is Robin Abend.
Yes.
Hey Jim, I'll just clarify that I will be timing and I'll raise the, and we'll be two minutes and thirty seconds, I'm having had three minutes, but hope that if you can wrap it up around that, is that something like the plan?
Good, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Robin Abend. I am a Wheaton resident and I have a freshman currently at Wheaton North full-time and I homeschool a seventh grader. This is our first year in a District 200 school, although we've lived here for 10 years. I did have an opportunity to speak with Dr. Schuler this afternoon. Thank you so much for your time over the phone. I just wanted to share one of the comments that I had initially made with him. I was surprised when I heard from a homeschool mom- Um, I was surprised when I heard from a homeschool mom about the change in the policy to 7.40. Um, and I quickly scrambled and went back to my focus in learning, focused on learning, um, newsletters that come out periodically from the district, because I had been accustomed to looking for anything that was up for public review in the blue sidebar that appears there. Um, and so I went back and I looked in my April newsletter, anything that had come out in April or March, and I didn't see anything. Um, so that led me to finally dig deeper. And so my comment to Dr. Schuler is that I do encourage, for transparency purposes, that the tools that the district uses to communicate to its community include those little tidbits about things that are up for public review, um, in every focus on learning that comes out. I had noticed that it had been done from April till about February, and then it kind of dropped off, but I do encourage it. I read the focus on learning newsletters from top to bottom every month, um, including I go back up to the sidebar. So I, I just want to, um, make that comment there. Um, this second comment that I have to make is in regard to, uh, the, um, new version of the extracurricular activities section of the 7.40 policy. It's been very much condensed. It seems to have been informed a lot about, um, from IHSA, IHSA requirements, and particular to high school students. I have a middle school student who's going to, um, be an eighth grader next year. He's been homeschooled for most of that, but he's going to Monroe Middle School to take three classes, and he was so psyched to be able to join the art club and potentially to try out for the winter musical. And I'm just wondering if, um, this, this condensed statement really seems targeted towards, um, things that may be going on at the high school level. Um, and I want us to always keep in mind too, that we're serving elementary students who may be homeschooled or private schooled for part of the day, in addition to middle school students as well. That's it.
The next speaker I signed up is Sydney Westray.
Thank you. My name is Sydney Westray. I live at 923 Santa Rosa in Wheaton. And let me start by publicly apologizing to Jeff Schuler for my tone. I was less than charitable and kind when I spoke with you on the phone last Thursday. I'm grateful for your time. Um, I've been a taxpayer and a voter in Wheaton since 2001, and I'm here tonight representing hundreds of people who in the last forty-eight hours have joined me in requesting that the Board of Education repeal recent changes to policy 7.40 related to homeschool participation in extracurricular activities. The hundreds of people who joined this effort are friends, neighbors, and fellow church members. We have children or grandchildren who have attended public schools, private schools, have homeschooled or been homeschooled. What unites us is our common understanding of this unique community. We welcome people from other cities and other countries. We support those in need, and we support the educational choices of our neighbors. The sweeping changes to policy 7.40 pass on April 11th, discriminating against homeschool students. With all due respect to the policymakers, requiring five classes at a district school in order to participate in extracurricular activities is not inclusive to homeschool students. Instead, it excludes students and children from valuable experiences, swimming, soccer, scholastic bowl, and the like. These programs, may I remind you, are funded by taxpayer dollars. Homeschool students also pay the required activity fee required like any other student to participate. Last weekend, Wheaton North High School presented High School Musical. I understand the performances were sold out, and it was a great show. I'm sorry we couldn't attend, but my daughter did, and she enjoyed seeing friends from church in the performance. I understand the message of High School Musical is one of inclusion, the freedom to be yourself and to follow your own dreams. By extension, we respect those who pursue a different path. The irony of this message, given recent actions by the administration, is now lost. Recent updates to policy 7.40 exclude rather than include, reject rather than embrace. While the number of homeschool students currently participating in sports or other activities may be small, the administration may be wondering, why the large community response? We support freedom of access for programs supported by our tax dollars. We support our neighbors, and we recognize that children learn differently, and want each child to have opportunities to thrive at school, be it public, private, or at home. We also recognize the value of extracurricular activities for the development of the whole child. I, along with hundreds of others in our community, requested the Board of Education immediately repeal recent discriminatory, discriminatory changes to policy 7.40. Thank you for your time.
Our next, the next speaker is Tom Spasic.
Hi, I'm Tom Spasic, and I want to first thank you for your service for our communities and desire to serve families here well. And I want to, rather than give comments, just, this is a couple of questions that have gone through my mind as I reviewed our policy 7.40. And the primary question is what, in what way is the public good being furthered by this policy revision? Something obviously prompted the change, and how does adopting these measures, more stringent than the IHSA requires, how does adopting these measures serve the community to which you're beholden as elected officials? It'd also be helpful to know how many students are affected by this. You know, we have no idea, um, how many students currently are being served on a part-time basis, um, and what change that would result in with this new, new policy. And how large is the problem you're addressing or trying to solve? I also just personally want to point out that the policy as written points out a specific institution. It references co-schooling, which is probably a new term to most, because it's a new term. And if you were to Google it, you'd find there's one co-school in Illinois, one co-school in the nation. And so it's just odd to me that, that this one co-school is being singled out in some way, specifically in the policy, um, particularly given one, uh, run that co-school, uh, in that we service home-educating families. They don't graduate from our co-school. We help families earn their education, as you do when you're working with part-time students as well. That's really all I want to say. Just wanted to list, list those questions, because every question came through my mind as I saw the policies, like what's behind all of this? Um, and we appreciate the chance to, to hear that at some point. Thank you.
The next speaker, I'm going to apologize, uh, I'm here difficult with the handwriting. Is it Gabby or Dave Rizik?
Yeah. My name is Gabby Rizik. My family moved to Wheaton six years ago, in part because of the district's welcoming attitude towards homeschooled students, participation in sports, and other extracurricular activities. We have been happy to support the excellent schools with our property tax dollars. We have always homeschooled, and both my sons have played baseball for many years. My son Charlie played baseball on North's team as a freshman and sophomore in 2014 and 15 without issue. My son Sam has played baseball for eleven years, eight of those on a travel team. He was on the co-op dive team this year and is currently playing baseball on North's freshman team. This winter, he placed first in the DuPage Bailey Conference meet for freshman diving. He was one of two students on the team. The other is a graduating senior. To say he is an asset to the team is an understatement. His contribution to both teams extends beyond athletics. At the swim and dive awards night, he was praised by both coaches for his good sportsmanship, hard work, and encouraging attitude. This policy change effectively disallows homeschoolers from participating in sports in the district. Requiring five classes to be taken at the high school essentially makes them full-time public school students. It seems unfair to penalize these student athletes because their parents are exercising their right to homeschool. The administration has cited an inability to verify classes and grades, which are submitted by the parents, as the primary reason for this policy change. If the Illinois State Board deems parents capable of educating their children, as well as issuing grades and transcripts, all of which are accepted by state and private colleges in Illinois and across the nation, why would the district imply that we are dishonest in our reporting? For the sake of this argument, if there ever was an issue, why not address it on a case-by-case basis, rather than making a sweeping policy change? For instance, if a fully enrolled student athlete is caught with drugs, surely you don't disallow all students in the school from participating? It's important to note that Dr. Schuler confirmed for me at a phone call last week that IHSA has never expressed any concern with the district's interpretation of their bylaws. Clearly, the IHSA policy was meant to be inclusive to homeschoolers. The district policy is now clearly meant to be exclusive to homeschoolers. Studies show that student athletes are less likely to participate in unhealthy or risky behavior. Students who are active in sports perform 10% better in subjects like math, science, social studies, and language arts, and are 15% more likely to attend college. The Board of Education has a responsibility to all students in the district. We entered into Wheaton North's athletic program in good faith under the former policy. Expecting us to effectively change our student's entire academic trajectory, or give up the sport he has been playing for eleven years, is not in his best interest. I'm asking that the board repeal the change to policy 7.40 in order to allow for greater consideration and broader community input. Until such time that a more thorough review of any policy change is made, I am also asking that currently enrolled, homeschooled student athletes be grandfathered in under the former policy. We partner with the district as taxpayers. We'd like the district to partner with us to advance the whole development of our homeschooled students. Thank you.
The next speaker I have is Jeffrey Parker.
You know, please forgive me for, um, just the lack of understanding about how the meeting is held. I did sign my name to the letter, or to the opportunity to say something. Maybe I, I'll just take one minute to, to express, as a community member, and as, uh, as a father of three kids that have already gone through Wheaton North, um, one full-time student and two others that I would call just, um, uh, a blended approach to academics, where they took, um, courses independently, as well as, um, mathematics at Wheaton North and, and a couple of other courses here or there. But the point I'm trying to make is, is that, um, thank you first and foremost for all your service to us. It truly is a blessing to be a part of this community, and every one of us would say that. Um, but it would just be, I don't know, a, a request, would you reconsider? Um, this has been an amazing gift for my kids. It's been an opportunity for us as a family to be able to take our kids in, in areas of education that they wouldn't have the opportunities maybe elsewhere, um, in, in areas where, um, maybe the school can't offer it, or it's just not something that, um, the school would ever consider offering. And yet, um, like I said, the education at, at Wheaton North is outstanding, so I'm not, I'm not saying that, you know, you're not giving what, what we're asking, there's just other options out there that, that as a parent you can exercise that allows your student who may have certain interests in certain areas, or as a family that you want to focus on, um, that it just allows us as community members to really educate our kids in the way that we want to, um, providing a level of, um, a blended approach. So I guess my appeal is just saying, we would love for you to just reconsider if there's a way that we can do anything, that we need to, I mean, I know what, I know what my wife goes through every, um, every, um, summer to prepare and, and file for the appropriate, um, approval for our kids to be involved in wrestling and, and all the athletics and, and programs at Wheaton North. But if there's anything else that we can do, please let us know. I mean, I'm, I'm just really appealing in regards to this, because it's been such an outstanding opportunity for our kids to participate at Wheaton North, and also have other opportunities elsewhere to study things that we really think are important in our lives.
Um, the next speaker I have signed up is Cheryl Oloneez, what's that?
Yes, my name is Cheryl Oloneez, and I've been a resident of Wheaton since 1994. No one likes to see good things come to an end. Um, and I'm here to tell you about two good things that will come to an end with policy 7.40. The first, the greatest experiences of our participation for homeschoolers in sports and extracurricular activities. And the second, increased competition. Both are good for our school district. First, when my ninth grade daughter asked if she could run track this spring at Wheaton North, it was a resounding yes from my husband and I. Not because we knew Abby would love running, but because of the great experiences I had heard of other homeschoolers having by, um, participating in sports in our district. From the first day of our inquiry to join, to just yesterday at our latest track meet, what we were told by others has certainly been the case. The process to meet the district's policy was done with ease. The paperwork was reasonable and understandable. The first step was to submit my course descriptions to the administration for approval. The next step was to take each of my course descriptions and pair them with comparable classes at Wheaton North's course catalog. And then lastly, I had to demonstrate how each state learning standard was being met in our coursework. From there, we filled out the rest of our general paperwork, and Abby was ready to begin on the first day of practice. The team has been very welcoming of Abby, with little to no distinction of her being homeschooled. At first, she received comments like, where did you come from? We've never seen you in the halls, to which Abby replied, I'm homeschooled. And the girls would usually just say, oh, that's cool, and that was it, and they were back to practice. The coaches do an excellent job of training the athletes, not only in their sport, but in their team spirit and unity. Again, I expected nothing less, and actually I've experienced more. Secondly, competition and hard work brings on more competition and hard work, and with that comes winning. And I think we'd be hard, hard pressed to find a coach in any sport that would disagree. Just yesterday, Abby wanted to beat the top 100 hurdler at their meet. She knew her teammate's time and went for it. She hit the mark, but her teammate still beat her by hundreds of a second. They both worked hard, they competed, and now they both have new goals to achieve. There is no distinction, distinction of educational path for these girls. They were just two girls wanting to win. Together, they took first and second for the team, a win for Wheaton North. Both of my points of emphasis are good things that reflect well on our school district as a whole, its administration, staff, coaches, and students. And these are good things that I don't want to see come to an end.
The next speaker I have signed up is Reed Sushard.
Hello. My name is Reed Sushard. I've been a resident here with my wife Rachel since 2007. And first, I want to say thank you for what you do. You have a much harder job than we do, leading thousands of students in the educational process. We lead only ten in our family, and I see the results of your work as a professor at Wheaton College, and I am genuinely impressed. I'm a professional educator. I have a PhD from the School of Education at the University. And my specialty is media ecology, so if you're interested in the social and emotional learning outcomes tied to social media, I'm, I'm an expert in the area. Call up. I would like to reiterate what's been said by the previous speakers, as well as simply point out the joy of the situation that we're in and the sorrow of the situation that is being proposed. My wife and I were in Switzerland, the richest, safest, cleanest country in the world, where all students come out quadrilingual, baccalaureate, and with 800 years of known, known political enemies. It's a pretty good place to raise your children. Wasn't good enough for us, because we weren't allowed to homeschool. So we came to Wheaton, Illinois, where we were astonished, we were impressed, we were delighted, we were overjoyed to discover that it wasn't an us-and-them scenario, that it was an environment of all of us together, win-win. I think you should also look at, based on tonight's presentations of your actual regular meeting, uh, the relationship, a higher relationship, I would correct, between social and emotional learning and the choice by some parents to homeschool, specifically for some children and not others, specifically for a certain phase of the educational process, not the whole one, et cetera. In our case, our children can't abide by this rule of yours, because by that time in high school, when they want to play your high school sports, they're already at College of DuPage. To get college credit, to get dual credit so they can finish Wheaton in three years or less. So we've had a son on your, uh, Wheaton North, um, wrestling team, we've had sons and daughters that wanted to do other things, but this, this policy change will actually detrimentally create a sort of, uh, win-lose situation. Personally, our family has given $40,000 to the Wheaton, um, District 200 school, and I'd like to ask as a question of, uh, just factual representation, but the next meeting, I mean, I'll try to find out myself the answer, but I'd like to know, how many families are there that homeschool, and what tax revenue does that generate for you? I would argue it's probably over 1.5 million a year. I would argue that's a symbiotic win-win relationship, but right now, we're in a taxation with representation situation. What you're proposing is a taxation without representation situation, which then economically incentivizes members like us to move to a different district where we can have a win-win situation again. Otherwise, what you do is you put us in a position of having Otherwise, what you do is you put us in a position of having our tax dollars go towards one purpose only, and that is a luxury tax on the resale value of our homes by virtue of being in your excellent school district. So please do reconsider. Thank you.
The next speaker is Tom McAdam.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak for a minute. I'm going to ask, because I'm the last speaker, maybe I get four minutes. It's a little hard for an attorney to speak for less than three.
As a retired, I don't necessarily agree with that.
Anyway, this is my first time at this meeting. It's been interesting to watch how you work. I only know Rob, but he's the only person in the room I know. But it's good to see all of you kind of asking hard questions and working together. Before I start my time, I'm watching your envelope, I should say that I have kids that are in an array of different homeschooling situations. Two have not gone on to college, but they were Monroe for band only and then homeschooled at home. Quite frankly, we couldn't afford a Christian schooling experience for our kids, because I had chosen to leave the practice alone in my 15th year and work in the nonprofit sector. So this was a great solution for us, so they did that. Those two went on through Wheaton North and would do two to three classes while doing homeschooling at home and taking some classes through the greenhouse. But basically, we managed their curriculum, we managed their transcripts and everything at home. I now have a third son at Wheaton North taking AP Econ and BC Calculus and all those wonderful classes that you guys offer that I can't teach. And he's now watching it from the other side of the fence while his RCT plays tennis. And two more coming down the pike, one full-time at Monroe and one at home. Anyway, I just want to share, I think I kind of got recruited to be the legal representative of this group, because I did scour the regulations, and I did talk with Chris Anderson and talked with administration, and that was Matt Fisher, Denise Parker and I did. So I want to address just the legal position, and I have a position paper I provided that I think it'd be good for you to look at, because reading this as an attorney, you can see there's some real problems with the later rules drafted and understanding the confusion. But just let me say this, there's been this rich history of openness between this school district and these families. Wheaton has always had an appreciation for families of all kinds of faith. I grew up at St. John's in Winfield, now in a college church, and you try to figure out what I am now. But they've always been flexible in understanding of people's choices, and there's been this wonderful cooperation. And each year, this district was great. They thoughtfully reviewed our curriculum and recognized our kids were pursuing a high school diploma through their homeschooling experience and accessing classes at Wheaton North. So for many years, this has gone on, and Wheaton North in particular, you've had students, you've heard track, football, soccer, basketball, everything. That can't possibly be three minutes, but thank you. But I want to say that this particular policy as written has been a big pendulum swing beyond that. Now, I know there have been problems. There have been some issues with not being able to verify things, or maybe a misunderstanding that the Clacklin School was some homeschooling curriculum or something. I had a kid taking one class there, three classes at Wheaton North. And like I said, he's watching the year go on without participating. But this erosion in this past partnership spirit has me concerned. You have one more minute, because I asked for next one minute. I'd like to do that. Thanks, Brad. There's only two possibilities. First of all, at best, this may just be the result of this new administration maybe not fully understanding that apply this IHSA rule. At worst, it might suggest there is some exclusionary intent. I don't want to allege that. I just want to look at the rule real quick of here. So I'm going to give this to you to read later, but I want to just, a couple, three points. First, students that attend a particular school we know are allowed to participate, right? But the IHSA was smart in writing into that regulation the word "attend." And the definition is actually in the bylaw, in 3.011. And it says, "The word 'attend' shall mean that the student is enrolled at the member school and is taking at or under arrangements approved by the member school a minimum of 25 credit hours, for which credit will be received towards their diploma." So clearly, if you attend a public school, you can participate, and that's what attendance means. Under that, they approve them. Homeschool students can participate in athletics at a public school also, though. If you look at, I want, for those of you that are note-takers, I just want to give you this. If you look at the IHSA guidelines and you look at the bylaws, 3.010, there are questions at the end, there are illustrated questions, and one of them says, "Private school student participation. May a student who attends a private school participate at a public school's team?" No. We all agree, right? Attend, as I said, was defined as the school approves their curriculum, and they're enrolled there, and they're taking classes under that school's guidance or at another program. So I'm not at Wheaton Academy. I can't go to Wheaton North and play football. But it also has question 82, and it says this, "May a student who is homeschooled participate on a high school team?" Answer, yes. And now they repeat this definition of attendance again. I keep looking at you, Rob, because my son walked through Monroe and Wheaton North with your son, so you know what we did. Anyway, so the answer is yes, they can. A homeschool student, as the person says, they can, provided the student is enrolled at the member high school, check. The student is taking a minimum of 25 hours of work at the member school or in a program approved by the school, which we did every year, and Wheaton North was wonderful until recently, when we had this change. And then, third, it says, "And the student must be granted credit for the work taken, either at the member school or in the program approved." So if a family, what we want to propose, and this is, I'm going to get off my notes and I'll leave this with you, but what we want to propose is that, and this is what I talked to Chris Anderson about, if guidelines could be given to Wheaton North, so they're not Wheaton North of South, so they're not bringing in a dart, trying to guess at who's homeschooled, who's not, where do they cross the line? For example...
Mr. McAdam, we can, I think, five minutes.
Yeah, and the only thing I'm going to say, there are things like this. If the parent controls the curriculum, the parent issues the diploma, there's a minimal number or maximal number of classes that they take public, you could have guidelines like that that we propose and consider. So I'll leave the rest of that argument with you, and thank you for listening.
The next speaker is Bonnie Bustow.
I'm sorry. I didn't realize I was signing up to speak. I thought it was an attendance thing, but I echo all of the questions.
We have another two minutes and 15 minutes left. The last speaker I have is Sam Rizik.
Hello, my name is Sam Rizik, and I am a homeschooled freshman. This winter, I was on the district's co-op dive team. Before this year, I had never had any team diving experience. Coach Asher McRoberts was patient and encouraging, helping me to reach my full potential, both in and out of the water. I took first place at the DuPage Valley Conference as a freshman this winter. I'm looking forward to three more years of participating in this excellent swim and dive program. Right now, I am playing for North's baseball team. I've been enjoying getting to know my teammates and especially learning from Coach Colin Murphy. I have played baseball for 11 years, eight of which were on a travel team. Baseball has been instrumental in my development, both physically and mentally. There is no better way to learn patience, hard work, perseverance, and discipline than through America's pastime. In addition to my academic endeavors, I am an active member of my church use group, ICADY at Chicago Golf, and enjoy playing my cell with Wheaton North's Chamber II orchestra. I am asking the Board of Education to allow homeschooled students like myself to continue participating in sports and extracurricular activities at our high school, not only for the benefits to ourselves, but also so we can keep contributing positively to our school community. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. And thank you, all the speakers. It was very polite, cordial, and well-presented, so I appreciate the tenor of the comments we received tonight. I'm going to ask for a motion, a second, to return to closed session for the purpose of discussing collective negotiating matters between public body and employees or the representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees pursuant to five, ILCS 120/2, sub-paragraph C, sub-paragraph 2. No action is expected following the closed session. Do I assess a motion?
Zoned.
Moved by Mrs. Crabtree.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Erickson. Mrs. Hutchinson, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Broman?
Yes, the motion to remove the closed session has been approved. We are hereby adjourned.